Good morning and welcome to the July 9th County Commission meeting. This morning before we have the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to have a moment of silence in respect for Mike Joffe, who is a longtime county employee. His funeral's today at 10:30 and unfortunately will not be able to, most of us will not be able to make it, but we want to recognize and respect Mike's service to this organization. So we'd stand and then do the moment of silence and go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly on that black binder. And if you need a listening device, Robert will be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go right into routine business.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two are to approve the county commission minutes of July 2nd, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the commission minutes of July 2nd. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $353,560.51.
Pay the bills.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Absolutely.
Our bills today include $80,000 for concrete materials and $125,000 in the Highway Department for engineering and geotech.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. Item A is the Minnehaw County Human Services Report for June 2013 and B is the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department Report for June 2013. And those reports are filed in the auditor's office. The next item is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
We have a motion to approve routine action.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item are notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to solicit comments on proposed joint spending plan between the City of Seafalls and Minnehaw County for the 2013 burn justice assistant grant.
Is there any?
Motion to approve the auditor publish notice.
Okay. Second. Is there a second? Any comments, concerns? If not, those in favor of publishing a notice today, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 41248 in the amount of $6,863.85. The commission received a request for a compromise of lien related to actually a refinance of a particular piece of property. The individual that received the benefits, of course, unfortunately passed away April 26th of 2013. The other person that owned the property in joint title actually is currently attempting to refinance. At this particular time, she did discover that there was this other lien resting against the property for medical services provided by Minnehaw County, which was incurred in 2008. And from 2008 and 2009, there had been a series of small inconsistent payments up and through March of 2013 trying to resolve this particular lien. According to the applicant, the individual that passed away had no assets and the county aid lien was her liability. The applicant identifies assets of $11,500 in checking and savings, approximately $40,000 in a 401K account, the home valued at $127,000, as well as two vehicles and household goods worth approximately $1,500. The applicant informed the commission that the money in the savings and checking accounts were, of course, gifts from friends that were intended to be used to purchase a grave marker for the decedent. The applicant currently works at John Morel's and estimate her annual income at approximately $28,000. She is attempting to refinance and if she is capable of refinancing, that will actually lower her house payment approximately $400 a month. So at this particular time, we do have a lien against this joint title property and I will make a motion to go ahead and release the lien as to the property only.
Second. Thank you, John. I appreciate all the work that you guys go into researching these. These are difficult conversations to have most of the time and you do an excellent job of research, so thank you for your help.
Well, and to be honest, I'm just one commissioner and Robert and Ken do a majority of the work and I get a lot of calls from Jeff Barth.
I guess we could all plead guilty to that one. Now you're exposed. We have a motion and a second. Is the petitioner here?
She had to work today, so otherwise she would have been.
Commissioner Kelly?
Don't we normally, in the case of a death, write the liens off? I know this is kind of a new year situation, but normally that lien was against the lady that died, right?
Correct. With the action that you're contemplating now, you know, the lien would be removed against the real estate so that the person could proceed with the refinancing. And then when we would normally do our annual review and take a look at the list of folks who have liens that have deceased within the past year and have made the final determination there are no assets, then it's highly likely this lien will come to you at that time for action to be disposed of as per your policy. But for right now, with the action that Commissioner Pecus is recommending, the lien will be discharged against the real estate. Person can go on, refinance, and then likely we'll discharge the lien as part of our normal action at some point.
So there's still a lien against the estate until we release it?
Against the individual. Because we're taking it against the real estate to allow this refinancing and then we'll confirm that there were no assets in the estate and take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken. Any other comments or questions about the petition for compromise? Commissioner?
I would just comment that this person made many payments over the years. They weren't large, but it included a payment before she passed away, so.
Yep. Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to release the lien. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Correct.
Any other questions? Any comments from the audience? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you again.
The next item is opportunity for a public comment.
This is the time that if anyone has any comments about items that are not on the agenda, we would like to hear from you. Anyone have any comments or questions? Nobody is moving, so we'll move to the next item.
Well, the next item is a public hearing at 9:15 and it's not 9:15 yet, so we will move on to item 11, which is to consider a motion to authorize the purchase of square steel signposts for the Minnehaw County Highway Department from Contract 16424 competitively bid and awarded by the State of South Dakota. DJ Boothby.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. This request is as a result of our annual bid letting, not receiving bids for this particular item or these items. And it was awarded by the State of South Dakota and we feel that they're good and fair prices, so we would just request permission to order up of the state's bid for this, for the steel signposts.
Thank you, DJ. Anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you have a question? Commissioner Barth?
DJ, do you look for, do you consider doing your own bid for these type of items as well, or do you just jump on the state?
We do both. We research what the state bids and what the city bids and what several other counties bid for all of our items because of what our purchasing policy says. The state's bid for steel signposts and for signage is very difficult to understand and confusing, and so we elected to bid all of the signage stuff, including posts and sign material on our own. We just didn't happen to receive any bids for the signed posts.
Any other questions for DJ? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
We'll move on to item number 12, and that is to authorize the chairman to sign the South Dakota Department of Transportation work order for consultant services for countywide sign replacement project. DJ Boothby.
Commissioners, this is just authorization for concurrence of a contract between the State of South Dakota and Oltec Engineers. We are the resulting beneficiary of their contract. However, we have no funds. It's 100% federal safety funds being paid for compensation on the contract. It will be for design of our countywide signing program that you're familiar with. And it was delayed a few weeks ago, or up to a month ago, I suppose, as a result of adding a grand metal township to the contract. So the contract fee was increased, I think $17,000 or $18,000, and now they should be ready to go upon your concurrence.
Questions for DJ? If not, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 13, authorize the chairman to sign an agreement approving right-of-way agreements, permanent easements, mutual access agreements, and temporary construction easements required for completion of Project MC 121 STR-13. DJ Boothby.
Commissioners, this is for the two bridges that we intend on constructing this fall on Highway 121. Infrastructure Design Inc. has got the design contract and they're wrapping things up right now. We just received comments from the State of South Dakota on the design plans, and so they should be pretty much ready to go. One of the final missing links would be the right-of-way certifications, and we have three right-of-way agreements that we need to obtain and finalize and file at the Register of Deeds before continuing with the project. And we have a table here listing the cost for those three agreements. One of them is being donated and then one of them is $280, one of them is $510. We also have a permanent easement cost where we weren't able to obtain permanent right-of-way, but a permanent construct, or a permanent easement is going to essentially function the same for us, and that cost is $510. However, there's no document that the commission needs to sign for that. But the three right-of-way agreements that do need to be signed are what we're asking for approval on today.
Thank you. Any questions for DJ? We have a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience in reference to this? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, DJ.
Thank you.
We're still a couple minutes short of 9:15, so is there any Commissioner liaison reports?
You want?
Commissioner liaison report.
Yeah, no. Not.
The reason he's looking at me is last night we spent quite a bit of time together again. In fact, I think maybe we need to have a cot set up in one of these rooms. We talked about the process of where we're at in criminal justice adjustments, if you will, commonly referred to as Senate Bill 70, and what responsibilities the county's going to end up with since the state no longer will hopefully be building prisons. Frankly, it's going to increase the county's attendance, if you will, and this process and project of replacing the CCC building, which is commonly referred to as the ELCS facility and the work release program, has become a lot more complicated, to say the least. And we're getting some preliminary reports and projections about the growth that we're going to experience and the cost, and it's going to be significant. Unfortunately, we're anticipating currently that we will see at least 90 new participants in our jail program, and we're already at max. So besides looking at alternatives, which frankly the sheriff has done an excellent job with, we pursued almost every alternative to incarceration, even the nonprofits who have testified yesterday in the committee hearings about alternatives that are available to us. We're all, we've already participated in almost all of those. So we're looking at some real, I think, growth in some of the cost of incarceration, if you will. So it's very preliminary at this point, but I think Dick and I would agree that at this point it's a lot more complicated than we expected it to be and probably a lot more expensive. So that's all I really have to say as a liaison report, but I also feel that you ought to be aware of that because we're coming into the budget season and I don't believe that we're going to be able to wait a long time before we make a decision on what process we pursue. Correct, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I just add a little, in the coming years, we're going to see a rapid, significant change in what incarceration policy, I guess. We're not the only county that struggles with this. Almost every county in the United States struggles with this public safety cost and their budgets that are somewhat lean. And there is a critical nature to this because we don't know how fast this Senate Bill 70's going to affect, but could. If the judges want to incarcerate people and the prophecy now is not to send them to the pen unless it's a serious felony offense, we're going to get them. And by the same token, the work release portion of this thing seems to have diminished somewhat in its, I think we had like 100 on work release a couple of years ago, now we've got like 60. So what started out as a very simple, let's just build a work release center out by the penitentiary, has turned into more of a major look at this whole, how this is going to affect us in the next 30 to 40 years. And everything's on the table. We're, you know, there's nothing signed on the table and there certainly, we're looking for public input from what I've gathered from Craig, but this does have some immediacy to it. And because otherwise, we're already sending lower-risk people out to the CCC and that is, you know, that's not going to work in the long term. So I guess I would just encourage the other commissioners to look at this thing and call Gerald or if you have any questions, or the sheriff, before we get to the prioritizing on the capital improvements program stuff. Because this is important and it's going to reflect some significant changes. I think even what Tracy's going to talk about later indicates how this whole thing is evolving, but we cannot continue to expend 52% to 55% of our budgets on the public safety side and still maintain other things that are expected by the citizens of the county.
Thank you, Dick. Commissioner Pecus?
Well, my ears are ringing. I said this in February, but apparently it just went right over the legislators' heads and now it's sitting right here on our budget list. I just did some preliminary math. If it does cost, in fact, $35,000 a year to house a person at the county incarcerated, 90 more people approximately comes to 3.15 million. That's how much it's going to hit us right now. So we got to figure out a way to rack them, stack them, build it, shove them, stick them wherever we got to put them, because they're coming. And this is something that we were talking about for the last six, seven months. And I think, Jeff, you and I discussed last week about some proposed legislative ideas about what that cost would be and to have the state somehow give us a cost or some sort of remuneration back for us to deal with this shattering amount that we're going to be dealing with, that the sheriff has obviously been appraised of and involved with. And, you know, what's interesting to me is that that wasn't just something that was brought up out of the, you know, back of my mind. A circuit judge actually made that recommendation to me, that we should go to the state and ask. Because this circuit judge knew, they're sticking them in our jail. You better go to the state and get some help. So we need to listen to our judges, we need to work with our partner, the state, and I think that this isn't something that just can be borne on the backs of Minnehaw County property taxpayers.
Thank you, John.
And thank you for sitting here last night and working with us, because this is a very big challenge that this county has to deal with.
Sometime in August, we will ask Craig Anderson, who's leading our group, to come and make comments before our final budget hearing, because I think there's going to have to be some numbers plugged into the capital program for facility issues and operating costs. I will tell you that one of the shocking things that I saw, and I think Dick would agree, is yesterday they brought us a list of who's occupying the jail and who's occupying CCC and where they may go. There's nobody there on that list, and the list is that thick of people I would want to see in the community. These are people with serious criminal problems and there's not a alternative right now, even with the alternatives that we've looked at that fit with most of those individuals. So it's not like we're already not trying to find other alternatives for them, because the sheriff has been doing that for years, and now adding potentially 90 people is going to be a problem. And I hope it's not stack them and rack them, but it may be something similar to that. Any other liaison reports? Now that we've got everybody shocked. If not, let's go back to the drainage permit.
Item number 10.
Item number 10.
A public hearing to consider drainage permit application, 13-38 from Duane Roman to conduct agricultural drainage, excuse me, on the divot addition southeast quarter of Section 11 Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Dustin Powers.
Good morning, Dustin. And since this is your last project, before you move to the city, this is going to be the, your, kind of your.
Swan tail.
Legacy of what happens, of what we remember about you.
It's going to sum everything up, huh?
But we're not going to be easy on you.
All right.
If you think you're getting out easy just because you're done Thursday, you're in trouble.
All right. Today we're looking at a drainage permit application by Duane Roman in order to conduct agricultural drainage on his property that is legally described as divot addition southeast quarter of Section 11 Township 101 North, Range 48 West. A notice of this meeting was sent on June 7th to all the downstream landowners that are downstream prior to the water entering into Beaver Creek. There were two downstream landowners subject to notification. Mr. Roman is requesting approval of this drainage tile permit to increase the yield production and reduce erosion on his property. Mr. Roman has stated that he is doing this project to try to bring in 10 to 15 acres of ag land back into production. The tiling would be installed in Section 11 of Split Rock Township and will flow into a ditch which connects into Beaver Creek. The water will flow across land owned by Jacob and Sheila Jansen, which have signed a downstream waiver for the project. The water then continues flowing through the ditch and then crosses property owned by Mark and Jennifer Schmidtbauer. They would not sign a downstream waiver, therefore the reason for the hearing here today. The water flows into Beaver Creek on the northwest side of the Schmidtbauer property. Mrs. Schmidtbauer has contacted the planning and zoning office and has expressed concerns with the proposed tiling project and at the effects it will have on her properties that are neighboring to the south. She has expressed concerns with potential contaminants that the tile may release into the water in Beaver Creek that flows through her property. Staff made a site visit on June 18th, 2013, and walked the proposed areas of tiling. Each of the tile lines were being placed and function as the same, or within the same watershed, and according to the certified wetland determination by the NRCS, there were no wetlands on the property. Based on the information given, staff is recommending approval of Drainage Permit 13-38. I do have a short presentation here and then I'll be able to answer any questions that you have. The map is showing the proposed tiling in the red. The Jansen property, here's the ditch that'll be outletting in. The Jansen property is whom has signed off for the drainage permit and is okay with the downstream water that would be flowing. And then it comes through the ditch onto the Schmidtbauer property, which then enters into Beaver Creek. This is just a being aerial, gives a little bit more updated perspective of what the property looks like compared to the aerial that was previously shown. And this is just a kind of a zoomed-in version of where the tiling's going to occur. It's going to occur here and be outletting down here into the ditch. All right, the first photo that I, photos that I have are in the very northeast portion of the property looking to the west. There's going to be laterals that run directly to the west that will enter in with the main lines before they head south. This is just a little bit further down the fence line, another perspective of where the tiling's going to be. The tiling will continue to run to the east looking into the main line that will flow towards the southwest and to where it would outlet into that ditch. This is at the very north part of the property looking to the south, southwest. As you can see, there's a lot of vegetation growth due to the wet conditions on the property, therefore the reason the ag production hasn't been very good in this portion of the property and the reasoning for the request for the drainage permit. This is just looking back to the east at the same spot, looking back towards where those laterals will be coming from and connecting into the main line. This is about halfway down the project, just looking back to the north where I was previously standing. I was previously standing up here by the trees. This is just where the water's going to be starting to get into those main lines and flow to the southwest. This is just another aspect of the project here, just kind of looking at the entirety of the property in the next, this photo and the next photo. This is looking to the east. The outlet would be over here in which the ditch is running on the other side of these This is looking at where the tile would go into the trees where it would meet up with the ditch. I didn't take a photo back there just because the vegetation was too tall to really give you a good photo of where the ditch was going to be. This is at the very south edge of the Roman property prior to going on to the Schmidtbauer property. This is just looking back at the entirety of the project. It'll run from the very north edge of this property and it'll be outletting on the other side of these trees in which it, the ditch is running right along the edge of this field here. This is looking to the south to the Schmidtbauer property. The ditch is running right along the fence line here. We'll get another visual of that here. And this is down on the Schmidtbauer property where the ditch comes into their property before it enters into Beaver Creek. It's a fairly deep ditch, fairly wide. There's a lot of vegetation growth along the ditch, all the way along the ditch, from trees to grasses. This is where the ditch is entering into Beaver Creek. And this is just another view of Beaver Creek looking to the east. And this is looking up the ditch that flows into Beaver Creek on the Schmidtbauer property. So this is what's, it's very hard to tell how deep and how wide that ditch is with all the grasses there, but it is a significant channel. As you can tell by the aerials, it's a lot bigger than some of the, this is not considered an intermittent stream according to the USGS maps we've adopted. It's just a very large ditched waterway that runs through the property.
Excuse me, Dustin, is that, with that last one, is that the ditch or is that? Excuse me, Dustin, is that, with that last one, is that the ditch or is that Beaver Creek?
Beaver, this is Beaver Creek.
Okay.
And this is the ditch.
Okay.
So, that is all I have for you. If there's any questions at this time, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'll be available during the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for Dustin? Commissioner Barth?
When you call it a ditch, though, is it manmade?
Well, I think it's been altered. It's not entirely manmade. This portion here has not been altered that flows into, but if you go further north, if I go back here, I think it has been altered just by the way it looks on the properties to the north.
But basically, it's, it's in its natural course from wherever that was, down to Beaver Creek.
Yeah, so if you look up here to the property to the north, it's obviously fairly straight. I'm guessing that's not the natural way it used to flow. But once it gets down to the property here, it's, it's a natural flow.
Is the, is the outflow from the tile planned to be directly into the ditch or is it going to go through a grass waterway?
Well, it'd be into the ditch, which has grasses growing all around it as we've seen from the photos.
And finally, if I may.
Certainly.
Do you believe that this area is inundated in the spring when there's floodwaters? Or is it, does the farmland there stay above water normally?
Well, I would say the reasoning for the tile was because there's a, you know, excessive amount of water during the wet portions of the season, and that's the reason for the request.
Okay. But Beaver Creek doesn't like flood the whole meadow and everything?
Of, of the Schmidtbauer property?
Well, of the whole, you know, flat land at the bottom.
Well, the entire Schmidtbauer property, including the south portion of the Roman property is within the flood plain.
Okay.
And so, it's potentially, you know, could be flooded. I haven't seen it personally, no.
Any other questions for Dustin? If not, we'd like to hear from the petitioner first, and then also maybe any proponents, and then we'll turn it over to the opponents and give them all ample time to talk about their viewpoints. Does Mr. Roman want to speak to the petition? And you do need to give us your name and address.
My name is Dwayne Roman. My wife, Joanne Roman, we're here to ask for a permit for drainage on this property. I've been farming for three or four years now. We just purchased it this spring. As far as how, how wet it gets down there, it pawns in several areas there. Otherwise, you know, you can't get in there. It's just every once in a while, you run into a sweat spot, and I did this spring, went about that far with the tractor. I eventually got out, but it wasn't much fun. I think I'll bring back about at least eight to 10 new acres. And, and then on the, on the side of that, there, again, it's wet feet for the plants there. I'm saying 12 to 15 at least acres will be back into some really good production again. I guess I have, I can't do anything else to say. I have Brian Topf with me today to point out some of the advantages or some of the good points doing this.
Sure. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Roman? Commissioner Barth?
One of the concerns, of course, is nitrate went off.
Yes, sir.
I think Dustin told me that you are keeping an eye on that issue, and I know that any excess fertilizer put on any property is wasted. So, are you taking steps to monitor that?
Yes, sir. I, last year, I, I did grid sampling, so they go in, every two and a half acres, they take a sample of soil and do, and so that they know exactly how much nitro, nitrogen and phosphine potash to put on and lime. It was low in lime, so I had to spend some substantial dollars in lime last year on it. So, that variable technology, you know, it's pretty much cutting edge, and it, it holds down, from what I've read, all the runoff. And I, and I feel once you've lowered the, the water table down to the three to four feet where the tile is, then the excessive water comes from the north, which I can't control. That has time to, to go down into that three to four feet and, and, you know, instead of running off in a rush. And that's why Mr. Jansen signed it, you know? He was aware of that, too, because he, his property is the first one to take it on, you know? And then it's going into, if you see the creek, it is three to four feet deep, six to eight feet wide. It's a substantial creek, and I think it goes substantially north of my property.
Any other questions for Mr. Roman? Would anyone else like to speak to the project as a proponent? Mr. Topf, would you like to speak to us? Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
You do need to identify yourself, even if we know who you are.
Okay, yeah. My name is Brian Topf, and I work for Topsoil Consulting. And I've been working with Dwayne on this project. I believe there are several reasons why this project should be approved. The first of which has kind of been talked about, but it, it's a pretty major creek that runs through there, and Dustin did indicate that it's not identified as an intermittent stream. But I guess in my, my opinion, that was a mistake or an oversight by the GIS people that were putting it on the map. This, if I may, I, I would like to just go over to the map here and just
Sure.
... point out a little bit about
This, this project is down in section 11, southeast of Brandon. And the drainage goes up through Allenberger, Berkman Ground, and then just to the west of Death of the Meadows, if you're familiar with that, there's a pretty big drainage that comes through there. That's, that's further upstream from this. And then it goes up through Old Tony Bosch, that's on, and Bly Brothers, the old draft property. And it ends up, or starts, I should say, it's right up here in section 19 of Red Rock on Armory Earths property. And the reason I come over here and say that this, kind of want to point this out, is it's about four miles north and two miles east where this drainage starts. And I have a list of, you know, people that have tile projects above that that all went through, and they all go into this major, what I'm calling a major intermittent stream, which just has not been identified on the county GIF map. So, this, this isn't a, you know, little stream that, that could not handle this along the floor.
So, I guess I feel that's one reason the project should be approved. Another is what Dwayne has talked about. He's, he's doing the best he can to manage nutrients because I know nutrients are a concern for everybody. And it's, it's soluble nutrients, mainly nitrogen and sulfur. Actually, some of the other nutrients and chemicals are probably lessened by the tile system because you're allowing them to filter through the soil and be connected to the soil versus running with the water. But the two soluble nutrients, nitrates and sulfur, are a concern for everybody. And Dwayne is trying to address that to the best he can with, with his variable rate technology. He's, he's doing a good job of cutting edge, I guess, technology as far as agriculture is concerned. I used to work for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and that is the, the technology that the U.S. Department of Agriculture recommends. In fact, they cost share this practice. Dwayne's not getting cost share, he's doing it on his own, but with other farmers, they, they pay up to $20 per acre to implement this technology because they feel it's the best you can do with farming practices. So, he's doing the best he can at managing nutrients. And so, that's point number two. And then the, the third reason is the county's own drainage ordinance, that Commissioner Barth and Kelly were involved with in 2010. I think it's section 1.07, number four. A drainage project which outlets directly into an intermittent stream provided that the intermittent stream is within one mile of a named stream, meaning Beaver Creek in this case, and that the intermittent stream is directly connected to the named stream as defined by the most recently published USGS topo map. And I have, I have no idea why it's not identified as an intermittent stream. I just feel it's an oversight, so that, that is a third reason. So, I, I've been involved in many projects over the years, and I've been in this room and watched this body debate, and there have been many times where I've thought, you know what? This is a, this is a tough question. You know, I can see both sides, but in my opinion, this is not one of those projects. It's a pretty clear cut case of a good project, proponent is doing the best he can to manage nutrients, and it's going into a suitable outlet, so.
Thank you, Mr. Topf. Anyone have any questions for Brian? Thank you. Dustin, you want to?
I just wanted to address one quick thing with Brian bringing up the intermittent stream in which he quoted the, the section where it states that if you're within one mile of a named stream. We, our GIS is correct. We go by the, the USGS maps that we have, we have in our office, and I even double-checked it this morning. That ditch is not labeled as intermittent stream on the USGS maps that we have up in our office. So, our GIS just copies what that was on those USGS maps that we have in our office. So, that's the reason why Mr. Roman was required to get the downstream permission. And Brian was correct. If that was considered intermittent stream on the maps that we have in our office, then Mr. Roman would not have needed the downstream permission on that. But in the, the maps that we have up in our office, do not consider that as an intermittent stream, and so that's why it's not included on our maps, so.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents for the project? Other proponents? If not, we'll hear from the opponents. Are there any other opponents? You do need to identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for your time. My name is Jennifer Schmidtbauer. My husband, Mark, is in the audience, and we currently live at 723 East 21st Street here in Sioux Falls. I have a prepared statement I'd like to read and a presentation. I'd like to point out a few things as I go through this. In October of 2005, we purchased 43 acres of river bottom land along Beaver Creek for the sole purpose of conservation. We have not altered the landscape in any appreciable way. While wind, ice, and an ever increasingly powerful creek have taken its toll on the trees, we have spent many wonderful hours out there watching birds and marveling at the wildlife. When we were asked by the Romans to sign a waiver allowing drainage from a portion of their property to dump onto ours, we declined. After a recent weekend of rain, we drove out to view the area Romans are proposing to tile and were dismayed to see a portion of their corn standing underwater. I then consulted a soil map and quickly understood why they wanted to drain. Only an alteration of the natural ecology would allow for the possibility of growing crops there. So, you've been well oriented to the slide that's currently up. This next one is a state soil survey map, and the orange arrow at the top points to the approximate area they are looking to tile. I don't know if you can tell in the resolution of this picture. I don't know when the photo was taken, but that entire area was vegetated at one time. So, I don't know when it was previously in production. In talking with Jake Jansen, the other property owner who did sign the waiver and contacted me after he had received the packet in the mail of the hearing and had changed his mind and had wanted to be here today, I understand that's hearsay, but he told me that, that used to be a beautiful area and someone had recently burned it off. And, you know, it used to be cattails and cottonwoods and small brush. So, I, I don't have dates, but the point of this map is that the area proposing to be tiled is actually consisting of something called claymall silty clay. The majority of their property, which, you can see, mouse to show on there. The large portion to the east is actually Davis Loam. It has a beautiful soil profile for farming. It's richly fertile, underlaid by gravel, and it drains well. In the eight years we've had the property, we've seen many heavy rains and have never seen a puddle standing in that field. Not that there hasn't been, but we haven't seen one. However, the area they're requesting to be tiled is a different soil type. It's claymall silty clay with less than a 1% slope, and it would be perplexing, a perplexing soil type to try to farm in. Clay holds water, and lack of slope inhibits drainage. If that water starts moving, say by tiling, the silty nature of it could increase sediment downstream in that ditch. Roman's proposed tiling project spans an area that has provided natural capacity for our landscape to hold and manage water in times of significant rainfall. This property is exactly what we want underwater as it holds excess rainfall for the ecosystem and slows runoff into surrounding streams. As an adjacent property owner who has lost acres of virgin prairie soil and trees to increasingly frequent high-volume surges in water that occurred much less when wetlands were abundant and when fields were not tiled, I need help, not intensification and managing water impacts to our property. Our opposition to the proposed tiling is multifaceted and echoes all of the factors the county is required to consider per section 2.02 of the Minnehaha County Drainage Ordinance One of these eight factors that you have to consider is agriculture, but the other seven are not. I have witnessed firsthand the flooding, erosion, degradation of water quality, and impacts to wildlife and aesthetics that increased water volume from the surrounding watershed that has, the tiling that has happened, the surrounding watershed have caused on our land. One concern is the known acceleration of fertilizer and chemical runoff caused by tiling, which, as it appears you all understand, does contribute to local pollution and is a well-documented source of the growing dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico. Increased nitrate loads in rivers are a serious problem throughout our county. I have a whole stack of articles recently that talk about it. The Raccoon River near Des Moines, Iowa says right there, "Nitrate primarily come from crop fertilizers, and better field drainage systems have worsened the situation." Record dead zone in the Gulf of Mexico, heavy rain taints water and nitrates, nitrates and water, excuse me. So, I had been working with Jay Gilbertson at the East Dakota Water Development District to test what has been referred to me as an intermittent creek. I appreciate finding out that it actually isn't because it does dry up in the summer when we don't have rain. It is a ditch, it's not that wide. But I did go out there in a week where there had been no rain, and we tested nitrate levels. And you can see both in the creek that they would be dumping into and then Beaver Creek, nitrate levels were 2.9 and 2.7. After a heavy weekend rain, we went out and tested again, and the nitrate levels practically doubled. We also tested water clarity in the creek, and a huge difference there. Those numbers refer to how many centimeters of water you can see through. That intermittent creek runs nice and clear when there is no rain, 60 centimeters, but after a heavy weekend of rain, quite a bit of sediment. You can only see 23.5 centimeters. Beaver Creek suffers much worse with all the intense runoff. The EPA considers levels under 10 parts per million to be safe for nitrates, and we are extremely interested in preserving the integrity of the stream for wildlife and human health. So, right now, the nitrate levels are not too bad. We don't want to see it get worse. The E coli in the stream is severely high, however, and that's one of the reasons that we removed cattle from the pasture that was in this 43 acres immediately upon taking ownership eight years ago. Small actions such as a 20 to 30 acre riparian buffer have been shown to significantly improve the quality of a stream. There's a great article in South Dakota Magazine about can we save the Big Sioux? And it talked about how the Big Sioux is currently the 13th dirtiest river in the nation. And by just cleaning up 20 to 30 acres as a buffer, you can actually improve the water quality of the stream. So, by our action there, we've actually helped clean up a portion of the river in a small way. Another reason we're very concerned about the project and, and this, and tiling in general is that we have just purchased a home on a bluff overlooking the property. Beaver Creek abuts the bottom of that bluff. If our weather and the river behaved as they have for the past 500 years, I'd have no concern about erosion and our new home's susceptibility to landslide. But increasingly, climatologists warnings that extreme weather events should be expected to continue, coupled with the rush to put marginal land in production for agriculture, which is aided by tiling. which is aided by tiling, is very upsetting. This home also relies on a well for its water source. We need to conserve the quantity and quality of water in that well through aquifer recharge along with the riverbank on the land it occupies. Jake Jansen told me last year, he actually burned out a water softener and his well almost went dry in that four months of drought that we had last year. We will have significant dollars into this home and 50 acres of land, yet be at risk for damage due to the actions of property owners surrounding us. We are being good stewards of the land, and we simply ask our neighbors to do the same. Minnehaha County will receive approximately $5,000 in property taxes from us each year going forward. I am very motivated to protect my investment. Let me be clear, we are not against farming. We grew up on farms and our family still farm. But we are against wastefully intense farming practices. My dad and brother farm in central Minnesota. They don't tile or irrigate, and in the short term are losing out to surrounding farmers that do. They are disturbed by the large amount of tiling that has taken place around them in recent years and saddened farmers that both irrigate and tile on the same piece of property. It's simply not sustainable. Water is a precious resource to be protected, especially in droughtsusceptible areas like South Dakota, as we saw last year. By draining the land's natural capacity to hold and absorb water through these wetland slews and swamps, we aggravate drought conditions when it's dry, and we intensify the flooding when it's wet, destroying a lot of topsoil, riverbank, and water quality along the way. There is a lot of junk science, special interest science, and real science out there to debate whether tiling is good or not. I ask you to rely on common sense. When you take water that is headed down toward an aquifer, or which is content just to sit on the surface where Mother Nature intended, and instead funnel it a certain direction, you're going to create something neither nature nor the impacted property owners are equipped to handle. There have been numerous articles, again, in the paper, you're well-informed about Schindler, just outside of Sioux Falls and the flooding. Flood relief needed along Highway 11, treading water. Every decision we make is an opportunity to improve or hurt an outcome. I also seriously question the recommendation of the planning office in issuing this tile permit. Dustin cited two reasons in his memo to you for recommending this permit to go forward. Number one, the tile lines, he said, are placed in the same watershed area, and number two, NRCS determined no wetland setbacks were needed. He did not interview us for any of our concerns. He was only aware of my opposition to increased chemical and nutrient runoff because of a very early phone call I made to him after Joanne Roman had visited me about signing the waiver. It wasn't until I received the public hearing notice in the mail that I even realized exactly which area the Romans wanted to tile. I feel there were gross omissions throughout this process in addressing all the factors at play. Does planning understand that leaving naturally wet areas intact lessens the burden that rivers and downstream property owners must carry? The increased tiling and urban drainage occurring throughout Minnehaha County is going to wreak havoc on the built infrastructure for years to come, as roads and bridges near rivers continue to wash out with intensified drainage. These are very real budget, safety, and property rights issues that you must grapple with. So, some pictures that I took. This Beaver Creek, as it snakes through our land, experiences a lot of erosion on one side of the river. The other side of the river receives a large amount of sand and gravel that gets deposited. So, on the side being eroded, you typically see pictures like this. You can see grass that has slumped down and been eaten off. The picture that Dustin showed in his report was actually the receiving side. It was a sand dune that had vegetation growing on it, was really opposite this bank right here. This is a picture of the ditch that we've been referring to as an intermittent creek prior to this morning. The picture he showed, it looked fairly small. It didn't, it looked like it was mostly grass. After rain, you can see in this picture here how wide it grows and how much higher it gets, and that is running right into Beaver Creek. The picture he showed in his report had a sand bar or exposed dirt there. So, after a little bit of rain, it really does surge. The township has been challenged in maintaining 264, 250, 264th Street along our property. That river is, as it comes around those turns, it has huge power and it's eating away the road. You can see they are trying to remediate some areas by dumping court site on there. The second picture on this shows the house that we have purchased, and some of the erosion taking place at the base of it. And it is absolutely scary when you see how much water comes through that land. Several years ago, we had a very wet spring, and our entire property was underwater. We lost about seven trees, and the road was washed out in numerous places. And after that same rain, I also went and took a picture of Romans' cornfield, and I couldn't get very close, I took it from the road, but that is looking southwest, and you can see the water standing in the field. Again, that would be that clay soil with very little slope that was previously vegetated. As Commissioners, I don't believe any of you should be in the position to have to decide on a permit for field tiling. It's asking a lot to fully know all the issues related to watershed management and to make decisions on isolated actions in relation to the overall health of that watershed. And yet, as the law currently stands, you do have that responsibility, that power. I beg you to do the right thing in this case, and not just decide in favor of agriculture because we're in South Dakota. As a fellow property owner, I have the same rights as Romans to protect my investment and the responsibility not to harm others in the process. Please consider whether tiling is truly necessary in this place at this time, and understand the consequence of the decision you make. You may not directly rely on this water for drinking or have to watch riverbanks erode and trees fall with each intense rainstorm, but you do have an obligation to be a steward of the natural resources that we all share. Just because tiling is popular doesn't mean it's right. I hope I can thank you for your leadership at the conclusion of this meeting.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Anyone have questions for Mrs. Schmidtbauer? Questions? Mr. Barth?
Do you believe that this is a ditch, or is the, I mean, a man-made or human-construed ditch, or is it, you know, an intermittent stream?
I believe it's a ditch. I think it's, there is a natural little draw there, just off of Beaver Creek, but further north, definitely, and actually Jake Jansen said he saw earth movers out there, the field to the north of Romans, he did see them create that or at least straighten it. So, it has, and if, as tiling is dumping directly into it, it's coming in fast and it's not naturally draining like it would. So, I do believe it is a ditch. Like I said, it dries up when we're in times of drought.
And in the photo that you have now, do you believe that the water was higher than this at some point during that, you know, was that sort of pond-ish area covered with water earlier in that particular, yes?
With this picture right here?
Yeah.
This was taken the weekend after Sioux Falls had four inches of rainfall and Canton had 12 inches. I have no idea, it varied so much, I don't know how much rain was there, but I do know just being around that property, it is wet in that corner.
Have you seen water higher than this, is my question?
No, this is the first time I went out and actually looked at that from that perspective.
Thanks. Any other questions for Jennifer? Mr. Beckus?
Mr. Schmidtbauer, is Jay Gilbranson going to be here today?
No, I talked to him last night, and he needed to work. And he did not contact any of you, unfortunately.
Will you? Hi, Jay.
Oh, Jay Gil, I thought you said Jake Jansen. I'm sorry.
No, no, okay. Is he going to be speaking today?
I don't know.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Schmidtbauer? Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Anyone else like to speak as an opponent to the drainage permit? Anyone else like to speak as an opponent? Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners.
You need to give us your name and address.
My name is Erica Beck. I live in Sioux Falls at 4601 East Alpine Circle. I served last year as the Economic Development Director for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, and previous to that, I served at the city of Sioux Falls for seven years, and I know many of you from those past experiences. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in opposition to Item 10, allowing the agricultural drain tiling at this location in Minnehaha County. I just want to state by, start by saying that I grew up on a farm in Tripp County, South Dakota, so I am in no way opposed to any sort of agricultural development, and in fact, I think that in Minnehaha County, we have a lot of unmet potential for additional growth in this specific sector of our economy. My concern, though, extends beyond this item and to tiling in general, and the expansion of tiling into areas of the county where future land use calls for a transitionary buffer of rural residential development and parkland between our urban development and agriculture. And this is actually depicted on your ag preservation map. As part of the Envision 2035 Comprehensive Planning Process, it does illustrate on this map, the ag preservation map in this location right here, that this area is not identified as a, a future location of ag preservation. And by no means was I part of this comprehensive plan process, so if this map translates into something different, the planners can help correct me in that. But, my point in showing it is just that in future years, we do anticipate rural residential to grow in this specific area and specifically within Split Rock Township. And so, I do feel like the Commission overall and the Planning Department overall maybe should take a step back and just think about in terms of drain tiling and agricultural use, whether or not this is an appropriate location to pursue that in the future, because we do anticipate additional rural residential development in this specific area. My second point is just that, you all know, because of the development that is occurring in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha and Lincoln County in general, that people move to this area not just because of a job that they're seeking. They move here because of the quality of life that we have to offer. And so, protection of our waterways is extremely important. We have very limited recreational activities in these two counties. We hear that all the time from people that move here, looking for opportunities and seeking those types of recreational activities. And we have a lot of issues within our, our waterways as they exist today, because of past uses that we haven't necessarily taken into consideration when their proximity is located very closely to a waterway. We have that opportunity today, though, to take a step back and again, make sure that we have some best management practices in place that address drain tiling. And that, that would be my request today, is that you consider deferring this until such time that best management practices can be put into place that address drain tiling overall throughout the county. Mr. Roman and Mr. Topp talked about their use of the variable rate technology that they're utilizing to ensure that the least amount of nitrates sink into the soil and therefore into our waterways. But that is nowhere mandated, that they are required to do that. And so, my concern would be that, because we don't have that identified as a best management practice within the county or within our ordinance, who's to say that they actually have to do that in the future, or that anyone else does to that effect? And so, that would be my request, is that we consider that in our approach to these things overall throughout the county, and we potentially suspend drain tiling activities until such time that we have those standards in place that help protect downstream property owners like Mr. and Mrs. Schmidtbauer, but also the rest of the citizens within the county that enjoy accessing our, our waterways and our riverways in general. Last thing I wanted to point out is through the Envision 2035 process, there were numerous meetings held within the surrounding communities, and those pointed out quite a number, whoops, excuse me, quite a number of items. Specifically, there was an agricultural survey that was let out within those four communities. I believe I had down that 39 people participated in the survey, and there is one question in the survey specifically that says, gives someone the opportunity to either agree or disagree, that runoff from farm fields and other agricultural uses cause environmental problems. And that's a very generic question, obviously, but out of that 39 participants that responded, 26 of those participants either agreed or strongly agreed that that was an issue that needed to be taken into consideration. And so, therefore, my request to, to really defer this until such time that you can look into it further and make some determinations and best management practices, and ensure that we have standards set in place. This is not just something that I'm concerned about or that Jennifer and Mark are concerned about, this is something that other people within the county are concerned about as well. And so, taking that into consideration would be extremely helpful, and I think would promote additional growth within the county in the years to come, because our quality of life does impact our economic development opportunities that we have within this county and adjacent counties as well. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. If not, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer, Erica, sorry. Questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I think in 2010, that was what we did address, when we had a task force that addressed, that addressed drainage, and I wasn't on the commission at that time, but they did have commissioners, and they had city and county people, and I think they spent months, Dick could probably speak to that better than I did just because he was on it and I was not, and was not on the commission at that time, but spent a lot of time looking at all the issues from both city and county people.
And, and thank you for that. I, I do agree with that. My only statement would be that, I think in this instance, and it specifically says that within your ordinance, Section 2.02, it gives those eight considerations and factors that Jennifer went over, and I don't know that those were addressed, or that, I could say that they were addressed anyway within the staff report. I don't believe that it was pointed out in any way, shape, or form that all of those items were addressed, and evaluating whether or not this application should be approved.
Thank you, Erica. Any other questions? Any other opponents?
My name is Joshua Losky, and I am with at 2701 Circle in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I have a quick thing I'd like to distribute if I possibly.
Sure.
Give it, share it. Thank you.
All right, as I said, I am a, my name is Joshua Losky. I am an East River Sierra Club board member. I'm a current student at USD in the Sustainability Program and also the Business Program. I have spent my entire life in South Dakota, and I've always appreciated the outdoor, or the state's connection to nature. As an avid sportsman and not lover of the outdoors, I have enjoyed countless weekends with my dad and sister exploring South Dakota's beautiful state parks, including Beaver Creek. When Jennifer Schmidtbauer informed me of the proposed tile drainage, I was dismayed. I have frequented the parks over the past couple of decades and have been forced to watch the influences of humans slowly degrade these once-pristine areas. Anyone who has gone to Beaver Creek State Park for some time knows just how prone this area is to erosion, particularly during times of high water levels. The creek has claimed a cement footbridge that was swept off of its foundation due to heavy rains indicated in the blue attached, or in the blue box on the attached map. Recently, a trail had to be closed off and rerouted because of a hill that slumped, and that's indicated in the yellow portion of the map. The area indicated in the purple on the map has been eroded to less than three feet across, and it's also in that map, you can tell that it was taken, it was drawn some time ago, and there's, at that time, it was quite wide, it was probably 20 to 30 feet wide, and now that's been eroded to only about three feet across. In addition to this, there's an old wooden tractor bridge from when the area was farmed, and that has seen multiple repairs as, as soil has fallen away from the creek's banks, and that's as recent as, I think, this past year. In 2011, the bridge on 264th Street just north of the park was closed due to safety concerns, and that's indicated in the red box. And these are all examples of how powerful this creek can be and how it can influence its fragile surroundings. I have enjoyed so many memory-filled weekends growing up at state parks such as Beaver Creek. Although the issues of Jennifer's land and state parks seem separate, they are both a part of the same watershed shed and are inherently related. I hope as you consider the two issues of water quality and land erosion in relation to Jennifer's land, you'll make the choice that allows your grandchildren and great-grandchildren to, the same ability to enjoy these state parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Does anyone have any questions for him? Any questions? Thank you for your presentation. Any other opponents? We now give the opportunity for staff and for proponents to do a short rebuttal, and I emphasize short. Anyone have any response, Dustin or the Romans?
All right, we've heard a lot here, so let me try to keep it short and go through some of these things. Well, let me first talk about what Erica brought up, since that's the most recent in our minds, with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Those maps that showed the ag preservation on it and the rural residential transition zones, obviously, the 2035- zones, obviously, the 2035 comprehensive plan hasn't yet been adopted. It has yet to be finished. So that map was something that we presented at those public hearings that she had discussed and where we displayed the surveys and those things. Looking at where the Romans' property is, it's two and a half miles out of Brandon. So, you know, we were planning for 2035. I mean, that's why we call out areas that far out. I would say that, you know, a residential development happening out there is not going to happen in county's jurisdiction. So until Brandon expands two and a half miles out to the southeast, you know, that's when those issues with tiling and the properties are going to be expected. How tiling, you know, having tiling in the ground affects a residential development? If a developer's going to go out there and develop it all into residential housing or commercial development, they're going to grade and do everything to that property to make it suitable for their current use that they're looking for. So to say that the potential of this tiling project, which we're just looking at this tiling project and not tiling in the entire county at this moment, I would say it would be hard to justify that this is going to hinder or limit any development in the future on that property. Going back to some of the issues that were brought up by Mrs. Schmidtbauer as well as staff's recommendation on this project, they brought up section 202, the evaluation of the drainage permit. These are things that, I don't write a 10-page report when I bring it to you guys. These are things that you guys will also hear in the meeting. So I don't see it's necessary that I write a long report because we're discussing it now. I mean, these things are going to come up. I can briefly go through it. You know, these are things that, factors that should be considered. It doesn't mean that these are guidelines. There's not, when it says number one flood hazard zones, it doesn't say you can't do tiling in flood hazard zones in the ordinance. It doesn't say you can. It's just a guideline that we take into consideration. And it's the same thing with all of these eight conditions on here. So flood hazard zones, as I discussed, on the south portion of the property, it is in the flood plain. None of the tiling being established is in the flood plain. You could have an argument, the Schmidtbowers have an argument that it would affect that flood zone area. It's hard to say that this one tiling project is going to affect that flood zone. Erosion potential is number two. This will, tiling reduces erosion on the ag property. This is going to prevent and help alleviate erosion on the property. Now, they have the argument that it could produce erosion in Beaver Creek. Well, as they stated and as we can see just by looking at Beaver Creek, it's eroding now. Is it because of tiling? It's hard to say. It's just another consideration. It's another thing you have to weigh in when you're making these decisions. Water quality and supply, by reducing the erosion on the property, it's reducing the amount of soils or particulates from the soils that can get into the ditch and the waterway. You can have an argument that it does, though, increase the nitrates in the waterway. It's pros and cons and it's something that if you read one article, it's going to say one thing. If you read the other, there's not a set standard. There's so much natural variability in all drain projects. When you look, you know, this project here is going to be different than one a half a mile away. So these are things that all have to begin taking into consideration. Ag production is one. Obviously, this is planned to increase the ag production. Environmental quality, it's the same thing. There's going to be arguments that say tile does hurt the environment. There's going to be arguments that say it has no effect. So, I mean, when I'm making these decisions and when I'm writing these reports, all of these factors are things that I look at. The aesthetics, you know, aesthetics, I don't know what it means by that really. I wasn't here when that ordinance was adopted. But if you ask a farmer, is this going to make the property look better? And he's going to say yes, because I'm going to see more rows of corn on my field. If you ask Schmidtbauer, they're going to say no because of the grasses and things that went away. So it's a balance of the two. Fish and wildlife values, I mean, there's not a lot, I mean, there's some fish out there, but, you know, wildlife values, you know, it's one of those things that it's just a weight. You could have the argument that it's removing some of the grassland, but what do the pheasants and everything feed on is the crop in the fields. So, and the last thing is the downstream and that's what, why the Schmidtbowers are here. And there's, you know, a number of things that we look at. Is it uncontrolled drainage? I think actually tiling and as I think Brian indicated, you know, the Department of Agricultural supports this because it actually controls drainage. Drain tile reduces peak flows on the properties, which reduces erosion. So it does have, it does sustain flows a little longer, but it does reduce those peak flows that cause the erosion and cause those nitrates to be in the water. The Schmidtbauer brought up the nitrate levels in the water. In Beaver Creek, they measured them when it hadn't rained for a while. Obviously, those were low. Then they measured it when, after a large rainfall. How can we determine that that went through a tile that got that into that water? When you have a large rain, you know, four-inch rain or any type of rain, that's going to run water off the fields. When farmers farm all the way up to these ditches in the fields, which is a common practice here, when they, you know, farm close to these waterways, when it rains, those nitrates and those soil particulates get into the water. So these are all things that we look at. And, you know, when I look at these, I'm taking everything into consideration. You know, I spoke with the Romans on the phone. They came into the office a couple of times and explained theirs. Mrs. Schmidtbauer said I hadn't had any discussions with her. I've talked five, six, seven times on the phone with her. I didn't personally meet her out on the property, but she didn't request that I meet her out on the property. I didn't meet the Romans out on the property either. I like going out there by myself so I can have, you know, don't have a biased approach to looking at the property. I walked the entire property. It is, it is a lower lying ground, you know. It is like Mr. Roman said and even Mr. Schmidtbauer said, it's got potholes in it that holds the water, the tiling. The project that he's requesting is to help drain those potholes so that he can further, you know, produce on that property. I guess if there's anything else that was brought up that you'd like me to address, I could do that. There was a lot of things that came up. But I'll leave it up to you guys.
Thank you, Dustin. Does anyone have any questions, Dustin, or any comments? Commissioner Peckus?
Dustin, just on ordinance 2.02 that you just walked through, my understanding is that those are factors to be considered and we don't have to weigh them. What we need to do is we need to take them under consideration, correct?
Yes, because these factors were produced off of what state law says. And there are six things in state law. I guess I can read those off if you'd like.
You don't need to.
Those were the things that state law calls out that when adopting an ordinance, you have to look at these six things, which it calls out in state law. We, they're not the same as what are in our ordinance, but they're kind of a renderance of what's in our ordinance. So it's, you know, it's, we adopted these as a criteria or something that we look at in taking into consideration any drainage permit. And that's what state law is stating too. So that's why these were drafted is because state law has its things that we have to look at. And that's how the whole ordinance was drafted, was based on those six things that were addressed in state law.
Any other comments or questions for Dustin? I said you were going to go out and flash.
I actually just have a quick question for Dustin, actually, if I may. I noticed that these criteria are under Article II of our drainage ordinance. Is there any reason why it's under the heading statewide or intercounty significance drainage permits rather than the general permit?
No, I think that's the way it's always been.
Okay. So these are factors for all drainage permits as you consider them, not just the state or intercounty?
Well, I mean, we don't take a lot of factors into consideration when everyone signs off on a drainage permit. When a person comes in and they're applying for a drainage permit and everyone signs off, there does not seem to be any issues with those permits. It's just like if we were in Lincoln County that doesn't have a drainage ordinance, they follow, you know, they're basically hindered by state law. So, you know, in Lincoln County, as long as they get NRCS approval or even in Minnesota or Iowa, they can do that tiling. And then if the downstream landowner then has a problem with it, it's circuit court is what, you know, what they're going to. So it's the same thing with that. I think those were put in that area because any, anything with intercounty significance or something are things that are coming in front of the commission. And I think those were put in there under that section so that, those are things that we always consider when it comes to the commission. And so those were things that I considered when I wrote this report. When we have a drainage permit that comes in and there's no opposition to it, I don't have to run through all of these all the time because, you know, there's no issues with it based on, you know, the surrounding landowners.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Maybe I can give some historical context to that. When we looked at this original issue, I do believe, and I'll stand and be corrected by Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Kelly, that when we looked at this particular ordinance, we had drainage issues that were going north into, I believe, Lake County. We also had some drainage issues that were going actually across state lines into Minnesota. And prior to us even looking at this particular ordinance, we had no policy of even calling those other jurisdictions in getting so much as a by-year leave or their inclusion as to what effect that drainage would be. So one of the reasons why we fashioned it that way was to get a bigger table and to let all the different parties that had a vested interest to have a say at that table. And if I'm incorrect, please, Commissioner Barth, Commissioner Kelly, correct me.
Any other comments? Thank you, Dustin. Any other comments from the audience? And we'll limit it to just a couple of minutes on either side if you would like. Commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Topp?
I promise I'll be brief. Just a couple of things I would like to address. The Beaver Creek drainage area is very large and I sympathize with the Schmidtbauer because I grew up, Beaver Creek ran through the farm I grew up in over by Laverne, Minnesota. And I know the kind of drainage that's come through there and this is surface drainage that has increased the flows. And I've watched that grow over 45 or 50 years that I've been around that creek. So that's true. The flows are higher, but I do not believe this project will contribute to that. In fact, it may even lower that, the peak flows as Dustin referred to. The low flows, you know, they had lower nitrates. That would probably indicate that most of that water was coming from tile lines because there are a lot of tile lines feeding that creek. And the higher nitrate levels with the rainfall probably indicates that was coming from surface water. So actually, that in my mind would indicate that the tile line water is actually lower than surface water and it's probably due to the time of year. I mean, there's probably nitrogen fertilizer on the surface when that rainfall happened. So there's pros and cons to tiling as far as nitrogen management. The third thing I wanted to just address was, in 1962, that was, that was pretty nice, clean farm field. And because of all the drainage above it, we've also had wetter years, obviously, through the 80s and 90s. That has turned into more of a meadow and some reed canary grass. There are some cattails and bulrushes in the wettest areas. But in 1962, going historically, that was farmland. This isn't, this isn't new, new production, really. It's just improving the production on existing farmland. So those are the comments I wanted to make.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Topp? Any other comments from the audience? Last call. Any other comments? If not, I would look for a motion from the commission on item number 10 to consider the drainage permit from Dwayne Roman.
I'll make a motion to approve the drainage permit.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I have some comments, of course.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Well, I do think, I can certainly understand why a party would want to not have this done. At the same time, you know, human occupancy does change the world and you've got to be careful what you ask for. Potentially, you know, we could have 400 cattle on the same acreage, which would cause increased fecal material to enter into the stream. Erosion happens. You know, the fact that a bridge or a road is there doesn't mean it's going to be there forever. There's ponds down in the area of Sioux Falls called Oxbo, which were curved areas of the Big Sioux River that got cut off when a flood happened and that changed, the river changed its course. That's what happens. I, on the Fourth of July, I went to the Good Earth State Park and hiked through there. They have a couple of lookout spots. And you're 110 feet straight up over the river with less soil below you, which is dust from the glacial times and a tree root sticking out. And I must say, I worried that my slim body might be the straw that broke the camel's back and cause a new landslide. I can certainly understand it. I did drive out and look at this whole area and I fully understand it. But at the same time, I think, you know, there's so many factors in this, especially when it comes to talking about the runoff. An acre of corn, I think, uses 4,000 gallons of water a day, which, you know, that sucks the water out that would be standing there. Having the water be drained out slowly means that the soil can absorb water that from a daily downpour. This is a very complex issue and I'm very impressed that there is an attempt to control the nitrates going into the water. My hope would be that more farmers would adopt that policy. It's a waste of their money to put down more fertilizer than is needed. I'm certain that I probably use too much on my acreage here at home. I don't have an acre, by the way. But there's also, you know, so many other things. When you're involved in a rural area, you're going to have things happen that you, it's not a park at this point. So I'm going to support allowing this drainage.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
You don't often see me siding with the Sierra Club. But this particular instance, this will be part of the Sioux Falls metro area at some point. It might be 30 years from now, but it will be. And I, I guess I just have some concerns that we, this is definitely a nature area, just as Beaver Creek State Park is. And I guess I have some concerns when we start messing around with artificial means. And I guess I agree with Erica a little bit that maybe on the drain tiling, and I guess we knew it was going to continue to increase with the cost, with the price of land and with the price of crops right now. But I think we do have to be careful when we look at this. The land that's being tiled, from what I understand from Mr. Topp, it's been 50 years since it's been farmland. You know, that's quite a long time.
I'm not sure, Commissioner Kelly, that's what he said.
I thought he said the last time it was farmed was around in 1962 and that it's
Mr. Topp, if I'm wrong, please correct me. I think we need to have him speak to that because that's not what I heard, I don't think.
We have photos back to 1962 and I was just referring to, back in 1962, it was all farmed. And since that-
Including the area, this area that we're talking about tiling.
Yes. And then in the early, well, mid 80s, it started to get wet and it started to expand a little bit. 93, the world changed with all the rain in 93. And so it has expanded probably since, especially since 93. But I, my point was, this really is agricultural land. That's its history, going back probably far beyond 1962, but definitely in 1962. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm sorry, Dick.
No, I, that's fine. Although I do think 30 years from now, it's not going to be agricultural land. It may be, you know, acreages. It won't be that densely populated, but I guess I just think it's important. You know, every time we do something artificial, we do cause downstream ramifications. And, you know, I've watched what's happened on the Black Hills with mining and I've been, for years, and I've been very concerned with what, you know, what they've done out there and the lack of reclamation. And I think it's important in this area. The mayor has proposed several new parks in the next 10 years. When I lived in the Twin Cities, Minneapolis, most of the beauty of Minneapolis was its parks. And that town's always been known for its parks and they've got hundreds of parks. And, you know, I always thought that that's the way Sioux Falls ought to go too. We need to balance what we are in agricultural area with the fact that we are- We need to balance what we are, an agricultural area, with the fact that we are becoming an urban area. And if this were out in northwest part of, northeast part of the county, I don't have quite the questions that I do have here where we're not too far from Brandon, and Brandon's exploding as far as population and just what we're going to develop and what we're going to have available to our future generations, rotten generations. I do want to sit back and look at this tiling a little more seriously. I know we, we went through that. Most of the input was agricultural oriented, and the right to farm is important. And yes, they could, they could go in and put cattle on that or whatever. But, you know, sometimes I think we've got to leave nature as it is, or at least somewhat. So that's my concerns. As far as the planning staff, you know, to an extent, I think they need to be more impartial than an advocacy. We count on them to research it. We do ask them for their recommendation, and I think the staff, in its due diligence, determine that this is not, that this complies with what's written. But sometimes those other factors have to be taken into account, and that's what I'm doing this time.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comments? Commissioner Beckus?
Well, I just want to say that Ms. Schmidtbauer did call me at my office last week, and I enjoyed a very pleasant conversation with her. I did inform her at the time that, as with all of our hearings, we always defer any sort of decision until everybody's at an opportunity to present their particular case or whatever they want the commission to consider. And I told her that on the telephone. And after I've heard her very articulate, lucid, backed arguments related to her concerns, I listened and considered all the factors under two point oh-two, and I'm not going to agree with Ms. Schmidtbauer today. I'm going to support the motion. There's a couple of things that I am going to point out, that she did make some very interesting arguments. However, there's a few things that I do want to point out. One thing that I find concerning, though, is that there was an attack of not necessarily the ability to go ahead and do drainage tile insofar that it was originally the Romans that were, you know, wanting to do this particular activity, and they were against that. I also noticed that in her presentation, she mentioned the fact that she was from Minnesota, and even her family had a problem with tiling around, and they seemed to be losing headway on that. I noticed that there was an attack related to planning and zoning and their approach to this entire project, which Commissioner Kelly just alluded to. And lastly, there was actually a question whether or not the commission should even have the ability to hear this particular matter. Under state law, we're it. And anybody that has this many problems with the process involved, I think, is going to have a problem with any sort of drainage ever taking place. And I have a real problem with that portion of the argument that was presented, because we're all sitting here considering and working hard to do the best we can with the presentation that was made to the commission here. And, you know, if they don't like it, they can take it to Circuit Court. But at this particular junction, we are the Drainage Board for Minnetonka County, and we are empowered under our democratically elected legislature to make this decision. So I am going to support the motion today to allow the drainage tile to take place. Turning to Mrs. Beck's presentation, I do not support the suspension of drain tile in Minnetonka County. This is an amazing request that was presented to this commission to suspend all drain tiles. That is out of, it's beyond the pale of what we've worked so hard these last several years in working with landowners in Minnetonka County to try to make their property fruitful and to go ahead and to continue their business practices. And so it's amazing that that was actually presented here to this commission today. And insofar as Mr. Wolofsky's presentation, I understand that he has some concerns related to the erosion of a particular state park, and I hope that that park will be there in the future. But I don't really see, at this particular point, aside from the fact that there's been some erosion there, and we were discussing erosion, that under two point oh-two, related to the Roman's drainage application, that that is very relevant to this discussion today. Other than it's very unfortunate that there's been some fallback on some of the erosion and the maintenance of that particular park. But with that being said, I am going to support the motion today. And of course, the applicants always have the opportunity to take this to Circuit Court if they feel that we've been arbitrarily capricious. But I will say on the record that I would like to have the letter to be made part of the record that Mr. Wolofsky presented. And then also, there, I would also ask that the PowerPoint presentation also be made part of the record, just for clarity. And also, I would ask that it be made part of the record that I did consider all the factors under two point oh-two, and I am still supporting the motion after considering all the factors that the Planning and Zoning Office went through.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
Did you want to speak?
No, I'm still listening.
Well, I just wanted to say that we do have a process, and we do listen very seriously to each of these things when they come up. I have not voted for every project that came forward to us, but we have a process where we try to get folks to work together to make it work for everyone. But in the meantime, you know, there are tens of thousands of homes and businesses in the city of Sioux Falls that are pumping out their basements without any permission from their neighbors, without any permission from the Lincoln County people. Who knows what toxins are being pumped onto the street or into the backyards as this goes on unabated? And I suspect that the people in Schindler probably are the beneficiaries of a lot of that.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any other questions?
Can I just ask one more question?
Absolutely.
To Brian Top, please. Brian? I think I pretty much know the answer to this question. I'm just asking it just for clarity of the record, and that is that when you do do tiling of an area and you have a big rainfall, that water's not going to sit on top of the ground. It's going to soak into the ground because now that ground is drier. So you're not going to see big areas where there's big ponds sitting where you're going to have more runoff, which is what we're trying to diminish all the runoff off this property.
Yeah, I agree with that. Tiling is going to reduce peak flows. It's going to extend the flows, and probably overall off of an area, it's actually, there's going to be more water coming off of a watershed. Probably five to fifteen percent is kind of the research that I would back on that. But it's going to come over an extended period of time. So you would have longer flows, but lower peak flows.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one comment, please.
Commissioner Kelly?
You know, the facts are presented to us. Sometimes facts are slanted one way or another by proponents or opponents. But in the end, I'm just one vote, and everybody has to make their own decision on this thing. But I think the purpose of this, you know, this is the great forum for democracy. And we all look at this thing, and then we make our personal decision, not based on what, you know, maybe based somewhat on the arguments that are presented by commissioners, but primarily based on what we've heard and what we've seen and what we feel for the future, you know, what our feelings are for the future generations. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Roll call vote.
Thank you.
No comment from you, Mr. Chair?
Well, I'm the chairperson, and I can't make too many comments, so you're done. Promised? I'm still happy you didn't cause a, you know, big slide down the river while you were walking. You know, this is a real struggle for me, because I see both sides. I don't know what the development issues are going to be down the road thirty years from now. Does tiling prevent that? I'm not sure that it will. I do think Brandon will continue to grow. We just saw a major employer come to the community, and they're going to need housing for that. I don't know that this particular tiling project is going to prevent that. In fact, I agree with Mr. Top in the way the water runs off, and in fact, may enhance the creek, if you will. I also understand the need to farm the property that needs to, that could potentially be farmed and produces the income. So both of them are legitimate arguments. But then we get back to state law. And state law says that we have certain criteria to look at, and the criteria is fairly clear that they meet all of the criteria from a legal standpoint, in my estimation, to be able to do a drainage permit. And even if my emotional side says, I understand what the Schmidt-Bowers have concerns about, I think legally, based on the evidence and the information that we've received, that this is an unapproved project. So I will be supporting it. Any other comments? If none, I think we need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hiebger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion passes four to one. I appreciate everybody's involvement in this. It is the process that is the best process that we have. You may not agree with it completely, but you do, as Mr. Beckus says, have an alternative to this, if you wish to pursue that. But we also thank you for your input, and we know that it's an emotional issue. And again, it's not an easy decision for us, so thank you for being part of it. Dustin, I said you were going to go out in a flash, and I really thought that you would make it kind of simpler and easier for us to move forward. Next time I say that, I hope some commissioner tells me to be quiet. But thank you for your service. You have done this Planning and Zoning Department a wonderful job. You're one of the few employees that I get constant letters from other people saying that we appreciate his input and service and your expertise in the way you handle public comments and concerns. We want you to feel good about leaving here, and we want you to stay in touch, even if you're only going across the street, so to speak. We will miss your expertise, and thank you for the years that you provided us that. So good luck. Item number-
Fifteen, new business.
Fifteen is new business. I do believe we have a new business item, which is Tracy Smith is going to make a presentation on the possibility of a Bush Foundation grant. Is Tracy here?
She's right there.
Oh, you're hiding behind me. I'm sorry. You're going to have to move one way or seat or another so I can see you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm interested in submitting an application for a Bush Foundation grant that's due July eleventh. It's a community innovation grant. The proposals, they're seeking grants I believe that we would qualify for, looking for projects, focused on problem-solving solutions for problems within the community. And I think I emailed to Ken and to my liaisons, a program narrative. Essentially, what we're looking for is funding through the Bush Foundation to use the funds for a position, to fund a social work type position. In looking at it last night, I would intend to use the funds over, hopefully, a two-year period if we were approved. I think last night in the email, initially, I was going to ask for a one-year period. I did change that since I emailed, and I would be asking for it over a two-year period, essentially a part-time position to help with our office in providing social service support for individuals, sort of connecting clients on the front end after their arrest, helping clients with finding placement, helping with, you know, getting them connected if they qualify for SSI or SSDI, helping them find housing, helping them with detox issues, all the issues that come about with, so that, you know, the jail is a, you know, they're in and outs, and they keep coming back. And hopefully, with being able to, you know, track their arrests, hopefully that we will be able to show that our office with this position that we're able to, you know, able to also help with reentry issues on the front end and also help with keeping the community safe and help them live better lives so that they're not constantly going in and out of the jail and, you know, hopefully help with the treatment issues that they're having in addition.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I will make the comment upfront, is that when I first looked at the timing of this, we just heard just a few days ago about the grant. We have a short period of time to be able to turn this around. Otherwise, we miss the opportunity until, I think, this fall sometime.
It's December.
The winter.
Is when we have an opportunity to apply again. The grant's already written. All I have to do is hit submit. In looking at the timeline, it's due July eleventh. Approval notices go out August, and then distribution of funds is November.
Any questions for Tracy?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the submission to the Bush grant, or the, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
May I be heard?
Absolutely.
Before I was elected to the county commission, I did some criminal defense work after I left state attorney's office. And you'd be amazed, absolutely amazed, at what public defenders do in regards to social work, in regards to anybody that does criminal defense work. It's not uncommon to have to line up treatment and have the testing done of the individuals before they go in for their sentencing. And believe me, that is not the job that an attorney is paid to do, but you have to do that prior to sentencing, because if they don't have that done, they're going to fill up our jail. And we were just talking earlier today about how we're going to keep our jail empty. Our frontline troops, believe it or not, are advocates, public defenders, and criminal defense bar, that are doing things that I would call extra attorney, to go out and line up everything necessary to keep our jail empty. Because judges, once they have their fears set aside, they'll go ahead and say, okay, fine, the options here will be work release, or the options will be, for example, a suspended sentence, let them go. These are the individuals that are working not only in the area of alcohol, we're talking about A and N, abuse and neglect situations. We're talking about, for example, when I was doing criminal defense work, I remember I got a call from a guy who wasn't going to make his felony sentencing because he had to get his kids to school. So I had to drive over there, put the kids in the back of the car, drive them to school, drop them off, and then we went down to the courthouse. These are the things that public defenders do every day. And I remember when I mentioned that, when I got to the courthouse, the state's attorneys, they laughed at me, because they actually said, you don't have to do that. And I remember Pat Repel, who was still a public defender at the time, stood up for me, and she said, we do that every day at the public defender's office. You guys don't have a clue. And so when it comes to social work, state attorneys have what they call victim witness assistance. That's their side of the house. There's nobody really at the public defender's office to pick up the pieces like that. So I'm going to applaud it. I think it's a great idea. Good for you.
Mr. Kelly?
You know, once again, we have something come in that has to be done by tomorrow. And this is not-
Not her fault, though.
That's not her fault.
Well, I know that, but I, you know, somehow, it just gives us a, not the ability, this is the first time we've had a chance to talk about it. There is another opportunity coming in December, and it would leave time for, I see this as a huge expansion of the public defender's office, eventually. I appreciate everything that's in here, but we also, we have the Alliance Program already in place, which, with the Sheriff's Office and Human Services. We need to figure out where, you know, where we're going to solve these problems. The problems are there, I have no doubt about it. But the fact remains, you know, what is the job of the public defender? What is the job of the state's attorney? What is the job of the commission? And I will not support it, because I just think that it, and this is not a reflection on you, Tracy, but I think this concept is a big, is a big expansion, and I frankly think all the party, we need, we have a major problem here. And the conversation about the jail was a good example. You need all parties to sit- You need all parties to sit down at the table and talk about it, but, and then it has to be decided. I hope we don't have part of it over here and part of it solved over here and, you know, all of a sudden you've got three or four different departments chasing the same problem. So I would like to look at this again in December. And in the meantime, I think there'd be more opportunity to present some facts to the commission, but at this point, I will not support it.
Can I just comment on what John said? I found out this morning before I came over that I had a client that committed suicide on Friday because he had a warrant out for his arrest because he missed court on one of my cases. And I don't know how much money the county spent on trying to serve that warrant and whose job it was, but the only reason that happened was because he had a warrant out for his arrest because he missed sentencing. So if we had had a social worker in our office to help me deal with the issue of why he missed court, I don't know how much money the county would have saved. But I know that he has a mom who, I know about her hearing aid issues. I know about why she broke her hip. I know about his daughter, who was recently married. I know about the last jobs that he's had over the last two years. But I know that the county wasted a lot of money dealing with that issue on Friday. And I know if we would all work together, law enforcement and social services, and we all recognize that we're all in this together and we all came together and realized that even though it's an adversarial process, that we're just as much a part of the law enforcement team and that we live here and want to keep this community safe, that the reason that I only have two days to get this together is because we are inadequately staffed and we are trying to put out fires and doing triage, then I wouldn't be waiting for the last minute to try to throw together a grant application. But the grant is written and I just have to hit send and I write it on my own personal time. But put together the amount of money we spent last Friday dealing with the suicide of a client who was only upset because he missed court. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other comments?
I was just going to comment that, you know, Dick brought up, or Commissioner Kelly brought up the Alliance Program and I think that is a great jumping point for Senate Bill 70 and everything else that's coming down and that's on the other side where those guys are coming, or women are coming out of jail. Tracy's trying to beat them before they head into jail and try to divert some of these people. And, you know, I hate the example that you gave, but it's a very good example of why we need something like this.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I guess the only question is, you know, there's no question, there's no question to issues there. The question is who, you know, where do we solve the issue? And do we want to make the public defender now also, you know, having a social agenda too? Or do we want the public defender's office to be, in fact, defending those clients and maybe somewhere else, social services or human services or something needs to be brought into the loop when there's an issue like she referred to? I just think it's a question you got to ask is where do we want to do this? Because, yeah, it's going to have to be done in some sort, somewhere, but I don't want to see it under the public defender's office anymore and I want to see it under the state's attorney's office.
Then we move them later on. We get the program started and we move them if we have to move them.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve this. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Tracy. The other thing I'd make a comment on is I understand your emotion and your issues with what happened last week, but obviously, everybody can't be everywhere to prevent what's going to happen. And your efforts to get this started, along with the fact that you are part of solving problems, not creating problems, you need to take to heart and I don't want you to feel any guilt about what happened last week because frankly, that was a decision that you had no part of. And we're here to support you, not to criticize your activity.
I know, I appreciate all your support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other new business?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I was interviewed on Rick Nobie's show last week and Rick brought up an idea, the former mayor, that we should work with our other communities in the county to have a comprehensive park plan. The mayor, of course, has come out with a plan to spend tens of millions of dollars on parks and, you know, if we had a, perhaps our staff could contact the littler municipalities and see if they would have an interest in working together on a plan for parks in our whole county. I know personally that I think a bike path connecting Sioux Falls to Dell Rapids would be something that would attract people, et cetera. So I guess I'd like to throw that out as something we could move forward on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any old business? I will remind everybody that tomorrow is the day from, well, heck. We're here from nine o'clock in the morning till heck freezes over tomorrow night with budget hearings. So I'll remind you that it will be a long, hard day, but I appreciate your involvement in that. The other thing that I'd like to bring up under old business is that we, as a county, need to respond to the incorrect information that the Argus Leader provided through its board of whatever, that we have $2.3 million to spend that frankly, I haven't been able to find. And I would invite the people who are part of that process to come over and help me look for it. I get a little tired of defending things that aren't correct. And frankly, my response to that is going to wait because if I hit send button last week, there are going to be a lot of people calling me. And I really feel like we have been undermined by incorrect information and I would like to talk to Mr. Beck if he would like to come over and defend what he had written because frankly, he's giving us and all the hard work that we've put together, a stab in the back when it's incorrect information. So if you wouldn't like to relay that information, Pete, I would be happy to do it personally at some point. So, sorry I'm venting, but it really ticks me off. Any other old business?
Mr. Chair, I guess in response to Mrs. Johnson's letter in the paper today, there were a couple other items in there that she accused us of raising taxes without any public action, et cetera. These facts are just not right. And I think it well may be that she was confusing the city council with the county commission, et cetera, something that often happens with people that don't really follow things. Anyway, she was a participant in the petition gathering that failed so miserably a year ago where they turned in 400 signatures instead of 400 filled petitions. Anyway, though, misinformation once printed, then it lives forever and that's the way it goes.
Grinnan Barrett, I guess, on that particular one. I have not been able to read that. Any other old business? If not, we do have an executive session for personnel item. I have a vote to go into exec session.
Motion to adjourn to exec session for personnel?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Aye.
Was probably five, six feet tall from, our tire length of our lot was stacked with branches.